The Clarksville Montgomery County School System Study Session is now in order for Janu- February the 6th, 2024. First item on the agenda is Resolution Design Fees for CMCSS Elementary School Number 26. Dr. Luna?
Yes, I'd like to turn it over to our Chief Operations Officer, Norm Brumbley, to just give a quick update on the timeline for our resolution for our fees.
Good evening, Board. As you're aware, population growth in Montgomery County has resulted in elementary schools being at 97% or greater capacity and driven the need to build the district's 26th elementary school. A rezoning plan was adopted by this board for the 2024-25 and the 26-27 school years for the opening of Kirkwood Elementary School and Elementary School Number 26. As of last week, a portion of the property for Elementary School Number 26 has been closed on, the 9.61 acres for the building site for a property that is suitable for construction of a 1,056 student prototypical elementary school. It is necessary now to consider this resolution in order to fast-track this project, in order to ensure completion of construction for the fall of 2026 school year. Before you is a resolution for design fees for the construction of Elementary School Number 26.
Thank you. The second item is naming of Elementary School Number 26. Dr. Luna?
Board members, tonight, on our agenda is a very exciting topic for our school system and our entire community: the naming of our next elementary school. We decided it was time to stop calling it Elementary 26. So, this evening, I will briefly outline the policy and procedure for the naming of facilities within CMCSS and the justification behind the proposed name. According to district policy, recommendations for the naming of school facilities or portions of school facilities should be brought to the Board of Education for approval. New schools must be named according to the area the building will be located in, or it may be named after a previously existing Montgomery County school. Furthermore, the policy outlines the process by which the Chief Operating Officer conducts research and gathers input to present recommendations to the Director of Schools. The operations team has spent considerable time and effort to provide those resources. The team created a map with geo-referenced locations of historical communities and schools that were found in Historic School District Number 3, the location of the next school, from the late 1800s up through the mid 1900s. It's interesting to note that the School District 3 was involved in the 1942 Fort Campbell annexations, and the school district used to include some of what is now the Fort Campbell Army Base. The location of future school of Elementary 26 is directly adjacent to the boundary of the base. The lists of potential names examined looked at communities within the region, local landmarks, farm names, and historic school names. The list also provided military-connected suggestions. Given the proximity of the future school to Fort Campbell, our strong partnerships with our military community, and our student population of approximately 30% military-connected, the recommendation tonight pays tribute to our patriotic neighbors. After thorough consideration and a unanimous approval from the senior leadership team, my recommendation for the name of our next school is Freedom Valley Elementary School. That concludes my report.
Third item, 2023-2024 Federal Budget Amendment. Dr. Luna?
I'd like to ask Chief Financial Officer, Chris Renaud, to come forward with our federal budget amendments.
I like that it says "press" now. Good evening, Board members and Dr. Vedder. As you'll see, as required by Tennessee to adhere to federal laws, federal reporting laws, I'm presenting the federal amendment, first federal amendments for this fiscal year. And you can see that we had some additional revenues in HQIM, Title III funding, McKinney-Vento, ARPIDEA Part B, and math implementation. And then you can see that the offset of expenses, there's details of all these in your packet. And then for the rest of the funds, we just reallocated funds. The majority of these, majority of these reallocations were for payroll benefits and expenses. Any questions? Thank you.
I guess I was out of order. Do we have any questions concerning the naming of the school? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. The next item is 2023 Strategic Work. Dr. Luna?
Board members, in your packet, you will find the 23-24 Midyear Review of Strategic Work. It is a comprehensive update of exactly where we are with every strategic goal. This will also be provided to the community on our website, so they are welcome to review this at their leisure. This was also included in your Friday Courier packet. So, just providing that update that it is available in the community to make sure everyone is able to track exactly where we are on each of our strategic goals for this year.
Thank you. Next item is SA-10 Ready Testing Update. Dr. Luna?
Absolutely, and I would like to welcome our infamous Dr. Kimmy Saharsky forward, and she is absolutely our accountability and data guru in addition to all things testing. So, as we head into testing season, she's going to give us a brief update.
And the information I'm sharing is current as of today. Next week, I might have a different update. So, the NAEP assessment has started. As you know, that's the National Assessment of Educational Programs, and Montgomery County always has schools, they're randomly selected, and I've provided you a list of those schools and what grade and content area that's being assessed. We are getting ready to do the standalone field test. This is where the state tests items that they're going to put on future tests. There's a three-year rotating cycle for this process. Montgomery County is in the second year, this is the second year. And so, you can see that we are, next week, we'll be doing the third through the fifth paper-based, this is ELA. And then, we're going to, the week before we start the standardized assessments, we'll be doing the Grade 6 through High School EOC. It's a couple of items. This one in particular is writing. They're going to be practicing a writing prompt. For this spring, we started the WEDA assessment today. It's online, some pieces are paper. We'll be doing the ACT when we return from the spring break. The TCAP, Special Ed has a new test this year, so we have the TCAP DLM and the TCAP ALT. Both of them will be going on. The TCAP DLM is ELA Math, 3rd through 11th, and these are for students with disabilities. The TCAP ALT is Science and Social Studies, 3rd through 8th, and the EOC is in High School for Students with Disabilities. And these are children that have IEPs that denote they are, their skills are such that they cannot access the regular TCAP. The TCAP Achieve, which is our elementary test, and the TCAP End, of course, will begin April 15th. The 3rd through the 5th test is ELA Math and Science. They do not have a social studies test. It is a paper pencil test. 6th through 8th, ELA Math, Science, and Social Studies is a computer-based test. And the High School End, of course, is also a computer-based test. And so, you'll see all the dates that we'll be doing those. AP, we offer a lot of advanced placement, over 1,000 tests are administered each year. We will begin those May 6th through 17th. Real important is, in Tennessee, on the state website, parents have access to a portal where they can access their child's achievement data that's part of the TCAP system. Remember, TCAP is the Tennessee Comprehensive Assessment Program, so all the things that they assess are found in this. And so, parents can go to the portal, and it maintains their data over time. And so, we always like to remind the families that they can do that. And finally, the other piece that we do is the AMO. We have yet to receive AMO targets for the school year 23-24. Just a short reminder, AMO includes a lot of indicators. So, you have the value-added, which is the TVAS that you see on there, chronic absenteeism, a reduction in that, graduation rate, the Ready Grad, ELPA, which is English Language Proficiency Assessment, transition EL improvements. These are students that have transitioned out of the program. I was in EL, I took the ELPA, and it says that I have skills capable of accessing academic language. And so, I'm in transition, and they're called T1, T2, T3, and T4, as they track their progress to make sure children are all right. As they transition, if they're not, they are provided the opportunity to return to supports. And then, we have the 9th through 12 achievement, the 6th through 8 achievement, and the 3th through 5 achievement. And this is what it looks like at the district level. At the schools, we have two models that go on. The High School has a model that is made of achievement, which would be the end of course for them. The value-added, which is referenced as TVAS, are children making appropriate growth each academic year. Chronic absenteeism, that means a child has missed more than 10% of their enrollment in the school district. The ELPA, the English Language Proficiency Assessment, are they making appropriate growth? That's the growth in my acquisition of academic language. The graduation rate, and the Ready Graduate. Graduation rate here is Tennessee State graduation rate. If they move it to the AMO, it's the federal graduation rate, and there's a slight difference between the two. The K8 model is achievement. That would be the TCAP achievement, value-added, once again, chronic absenteeism, and the ELPA. And remember, I showed you the charts about they have an opportunity for absolute, that means that they're meeting a target, and then they have a choice of the AMO, whichever one they do. So, AMO is the target that's designed for me specifically at my school, based on the students I serve. Absolute is the target that the state says. So, if you hit that target, you get those points. If you don't hit that one, they go to the next benchmark, which is your personal growth or personal data, and you get the best of the two. Okay? Questions?
The Family Portal.
Yes, ma'am.
How long has that been available? How many years?
This is the third year of the Family Portal. And for families to access it, all they need is their child's unique student information code, and they can get that from the school, they can get it out of Power School, or they can call my team, and we'll tell them what that is. So, they go to the portal, they put the number in, and they can get their data. It has a lot of reports that share how to interpret the data, but it also lets you know what you might want to do to help your child as well.
And is that cumulative? Will that be 3rd through 12th grade? Will it be the information staying on that site?
Yes. Matter of fact, when families go in after they start taking the state assessment, the next year will have both years in there.
That's awesome.
Yes, ma'am.
Chronic absence is a large number in every category. What determines chronic absentees? And is there a solution or data to back up or ready to make that better?
So, in the chronic absenteeism, the district has slowly been carving away at it. It's still a struggle, because remember, in order to learn, you have to be engaged in the schools. And so, we are slowly getting back on track with that, but that is a difficult target to navigate. And so, the children that are in that data are children who enrolled in the district at least 50% of the year and have missed 10% of their enrollment. And so, those are the children that we see.
I have a question. I know in past years, TCAP scores haven't come back to us fast enough to include them. I don't remember what happened last year, if it did or not, but do we anticipate that happening again this year? Do you have any feedback for that?
So, and it's actually published on the state website under the testing where my team works. You can actually see it. But the state posts something that's called Milestones, and it tells you the anticipated date that you're going to receive information. So, for example, I happen to know the scores are going to come back on May 20th.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The next item is Goal 10 Development Implement Organization-Wide Communication and Collaboration Process to Improve Services Delivered by Central Office Reference L3. Dr. Luna?
Yes, as you know, Board, it's very important to us that everything we do at Central Office is providing services to schools. And so, our Goal Number 10, our Director of Continuous Improvement, Elizabeth Vincent, is going to share out tonight.
Good evening, Board. Thank you so much for giving me some of your time to share a little bit about our progress on this strategic work goal, which is a little bit of a mouthful: develop and implement organization-wide communication and collaboration processes to improve services delivered by Central Office. Long and short, the focus of this goal is around improving internal communication so that we operate more effectively as a central office. Why did we choose to focus on this goal when we set our strategic work? You may remember last year, we had a goal that centered on enhancing our effectiveness through increasing collaboration across our central office departments. The focus of that goal was very much on creating structures for some of the more expansive kind of improvement-oriented efforts that we had going on at Central Office. So, a couple of things that we did. Number one, we started building in more frequent and regular opportunities for the cabinet to touch base around continuous improvement teams that were underway, and hear updates both from me as well as from members of the district who were leading in those efforts to get a sense of where we may need to refocus some of our efforts to ensure that those improvement efforts that were going to be the most essential for our success receive the focus that they need, and also just allow the cabinet to get a sense of how things were working in some different areas of our work. We also increased the frequency of our cabinet and direct report retreats to happen on a quarterly basis rather than an annual or twice-a-year basis. And that's allowed our cabinet members, as well as all of their direct reports and leadership teams, to hear updates from other departments. We typically do data updates to track our progress on strategic work and also just major organizational efforts. So, both of those processes, as we've looked at some of the data on one of our key resources that we use to track the progress on our effectiveness as an organization, we have seen some improvements in this area. From our district-level staff, we're seeing some comments on one of our surveys called the Organizational Assessment that indicate people feel like that communication across the central office has been improving, and that collaboration across the central office has been improving. But what we found, as we continued to look at some of those data, was that we might need more structures for day-to-day work. A lot of our focus on collaboration last year were on some big-picture pieces, and we found that it could be beneficial to have some more defined structures for that sort of daily communication to ensure that individuals have access to information that they need. Another thing we started to notice, you all may remember that we have communication groups in our district that meet on a monthly basis. We have a group for parents, two different employee groups for both certified and classified employees, as well as a group for students. And from the employee groups, we noticed a trend on seeing some of the same kinds of questions being asked by employee groups on a monthly basis. Typically, we'd see some, we called them our frequent flyer questions, where we would see a lot of those similar kinds of questions come up. And that communicated to us that maybe we could improve on making sure that information was getting filtered down to the building level, so that as these questions are being answered, and as that information is getting out, that it's filtering to employees like it should, so people have access to information that they need. So, a couple of things that we tracked to get a sense of what might be some important changes to make in this area and how we could improve on our internal communication. Number one, we have a survey that we administer every year called the Organizational Assessment. That goes to all of our central office employees as well as our school-level administrators. And the purpose of that survey is really just to track progress on how we do with things like strategic planning, communication, measuring our success as an organization, some of those really important sort of features of having an effective organization. And one of the questions on that survey is, internal communications are effective, and information flows efficiently throughout the district. We wanted to track a baseline on this question to get a sense of how we were doing as a district. And overall, we saw 73% agreement that communications are effective. Not quite the target that we want to hit, and there were some important areas that we pulled from that survey to get a sense of some directions where we might move forward. So, first and foremost, you know, as I mentioned to you, last year's goal on improving collaboration very much focused on big-picture items. And one thing that we saw in a couple of the comments, you know, results from district meetings or decisions from district meetings are not always clearly communicated. So, again, really building in those pieces around day-to-day work and how we ensure people have access to information they need. Another trend that we noticed related not to district-wide communication from central office departments, but how we get information from the district to the schools. And from our principals, we heard some things like, there's so much communication that comes sometimes from central office to our buildings. You know, we have some existing pathways for administrators to get information. One is called Friday's Notes that our principals receive on a weekly basis that gives them reminders. Administrators indicated they wanted to see more information going in that system. And then, you know, many emails from central office and individuals from different departments. Because we know the central job of our administrators is instructional leadership, and we want them to ensure they are putting all of their focus on leading their buildings and leading the instruction in their buildings, you know, we want to be sure that we're using the best methods possible to get information to them efficiently, so they have what they need, and things don't slip off their radar unintentionally because they are incredibly busy engaging in that work. Another piece of data that we looked at that informed some of what we've done with this goal came from our exit survey. So, we have an exit survey that gets administered to all of the employees that leave our district. And one of the things that we added to it this year was a question that asked employees to rank all sorts of different areas of the culture in the district and things like that to get a sense of what are some areas that people are most satisfied with about the district, and what are some of the areas that were, you know, maybe the least satisfactory for them. And one of the top areas of dissatisfaction that we saw among our certified employees in particular was communication with a supervisor. So, again, how do we ensure that we are reinforcing and putting those good structures in place so that people have those channels to the supervisor that they need to be able to get information and access their work effectively? And so, taking all of that data, the focus of this for this year has been around creating, but also just reinforcing communication structures that we already have in place between supervisors and direct reports. As you saw, both at the central office level and also at the school level, that was an area that we saw where we could make some improvements to ensure that everyone knows what kinds of channels are available for them to communicate with their supervisor, for their supervisor to share information with them, so that people can access what they need. We also wanted to ensure we could reduce extra communications from the central office level to principals. We have several great systems in place to get information to that group of people, and we want to be sure that we have information going to those places, so nothing gets missed. And then, finally, reinforcing for all employees across central office various methods that they have to get information not only across departments, but also to schools. One of the things that I did as part of this effort was I did an internal audit that was an internal communications audit, and really dug in and asked some questions of our chiefs, you know, what types of information do you typically need to communicate across departments? To schools, how do you do that? What are the audiences that you typically communicate with? Really, just to get a sense of what those areas are that we spend most of our time communicating with each other? What are those pieces of information we spend most of our time communicating with each other, and how can we make sure all of those things are streamlined together? So, those three areas were really the big focal points for this goal. Some efforts that we've put in place. First and foremost, we restructured our communication group cycles to ensure that we could have that pathway from our employee groups to their supervisors set up in a really effective way. So, each of these communication groups have a building level representative, and we, Dr. Dowdy and Melissa Isat and I worked together to create a structure where those reps have a monthly meeting with their building administrator every single month before those communication group meetings actually occur. That way, as they've received questions or concerns from other employees in their building, they can bring those things to the administrator before the communication group meeting actually occurs. And it gives that pathway for the administrator to be able to address building-level questions and concerns on the front end before the communication group actually happens. We also spent some time, they spent some time, our two chiefs that run these groups spent some time providing more explicit instruction on those building representative roles, specifically as it relates to questions, and just reminding our employees that serve in these groups, if someone has asked a question that you know received an answer several months ago, do know that you can reshare these minutes. You can always feel free to reach out to that person and, you know, really take that responsibility and that ownership to be a communicator for your building in serving in this role on these communication groups. There were also some departmental efforts across our different departments that related to this goal, specifically revamping Friday's Notes is one that Dr. Dowdy and her Instruction and Curriculum Team took on this year to make sure that our Friday's Notes system is usable. It's been redesigned to a really attractive and organized format so that administrators can access the information that they need really quickly, and it lays out for them exactly what they need to know, what's new information, what's repeat information, and she and her team have done a great job of making that something that's very user-friendly, so we can continue to utilize that as a way to communicate with our administrators. And then, finally, I took all of this information and all of these data points that we've been working toward and learning about, and created a guide that will be released to all of our employees in the coming days that essentially just reinforces all of the information that I've shared with you, all of the different ways that we've learned, our effective paths that we have to communicate with each other. It reminds employees of those avenues available to them to communicate information well, and reminds them of those pathways between their supervisors and direct reports. So, if you have something that needs to be communicated to multiple departments as a central office employee, it reminds all of us of the process of making sure that we communicate those things directly to our department chiefs so that they can discuss it with other chiefs in our senior leadership team, and then that information can get shared more broadly. So, again, a lot of these systems were things that we already did informally, but just reminding individuals and putting that more formal structure in place, we think will be an important step forward. As far as next steps, we're just going to, as I said, I'll be releasing that guide that's been created in the coming days to our central office employees. We'll reinforce those structures as a district that are outlined in that guide. We will continue, I will continue to work with our leads of communication groups to refine and reinforce the updates that we've made to those groups so that we can ensure all of the information we share with them gets distributed to buildings effectively. And then, finally, next year, when we deploy that organizational assessment again in October of 2024, our target will be 85% agreement that internal communication is effective. So, we want to see that increase from 73% that it was this year to 85%. With that, if anybody has questions, I will answer any questions.
Hey.
Hey.
So, this is the baseline data. So, are you planning to do this every year and then reevaluate?
Correct, correct. So, these are all things that we collect every year, so we can continue to track year after year if we're progressing forward and if we need to tweak anything and go back. Yeah, so these are all things we do annually.
So, there's added before this about these items?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, cool. I would love to see that, just to see how we're treating with some of these things. And you mentioned your baseline data is 73% right now, and you said that's not your target. Do you have a target that you're aiming for in that? Just curious.
85%.
85%, great. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
My question is, how are these representatives selected?
Typically, they're selected by the building administrator.
Okay, and is this a diverse group? What percentage of these include minorities?
I don't know the exact percentage, I would have to go and find that information for you, Ms. Berry. I can say typically, they are well-represented from my experience with the group, and I would have to go look and find that information for you, but in my experience, they, there's typically a broad representation in those groups.
And are there classified staff in that group as well?
There is, yes, ma'am. There's a certified group that includes both elementary and secondary teacher groups, and then there's a classified employee group as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much for the great presentation. Accountant Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions, I mean, not questions but comments? Okay, thank you. School Board?
Last time around, we welcomed the new county commissioners, just want to welcome Autumn Simmons as well. This is her first time tonight, so it's good to have you here, Autumn. Also, wanted to say thank you to Dr. Dowdy and her team for meeting with me last week to kind of deep dive in some of our testing scores, I really appreciate that. And many who attend here know that I love, I'm a fierce advocate for girls' sports, so I'm excited, and you may touch on this again, but I'm excited for Clarksville High School's girls' wrestling team, we've got second in state, and really excited as well for Northwest High School, we've got third in state, so very excited for our girls in Clarksville.
Of course, one of the things that's most important to me, and this month being the love month, kindness and showing love to other people and doing an act of kindness as often as we can. And let's make kindness the norm for CMCSSS.
Okay, thank you all so much for being here. Dr. Luna?
Good evening. This week, I have been honored to be surprising our Teacher of the Year finalist. So, each year, schools select one special educator in their building to be recognized as their Teacher of the Year. We will recognize all of our Teachers of the Year at a banquet later this month. This week is also National School Counselor Week, so I want to give a shout-out to our school counselors in CMCSSS. They, the work that they do on a daily basis cannot even begin to be described in a job description, so I applaud the counselors who support our students. Just a reminder that open enrollment period is open. In CMCSSS, we feel strongly about providing parents' choice in their child's educational experience. Applications are open for Spanish Immersion, Moore Magnet STEM, our nine high school academies, the Middle College at APSU, the Early Technical College at TCAT, and K-12 Virtual School. We want to ensure every family finds the right fit for their student. And finally, today, I had the privilege to make a stop by our teacher warehouse, that's over at Central Services South, that is operated by our Clarksville-Montgomery County Education Foundation. Students from the Supply Chain Management Academy at Kirkwood High School were there doing a three-day training. These students will be managing our second site, which will be housed at Kirkwood High School, where they will be filling online orders for our teachers to be delivered directly to educators so they can have supplies brought to them. Also, a huge thank you to Lowe's Distribution Center, who have been amazing partners with the supplies and logistical support for this academy. It's amazing to see the hands-on application for our students that they're learning daily to prepare them for their future careers. Mr. Garland, this concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.